Welcome to the city council meeting. It is officially called to order. As usual, we will start with our chaplain prayer and pledges. And it looks like we have Ralph Dawkins here to lead us in both. Thank you.
Good morning. Let us pray. Father, thank you for the opportunity to invoke prayer and your word into this gathering of city officials, leaders, and concerned citizens. Lord, you declare that your word says that we should acknowledge you in all of our ways, and you would direct our paths. You said that if we delight ourselves in you, that you would give us the desires of our heart. I pray, Father, that you will give these servant leaders knowledge, wisdom, and courage to deal with the agenda items today that will take care of the business and any problems that are on the agenda and issues facing our city and its people. We ask that you would bless them mightily today. Come into this room and cause them to have a productive meeting. Lead each and every one of them to make fruitful contributions to deal with every agenda item and enable them, oh Lord, to think and to strategize in ways that will help them achieve great results. I pray that you would give them godly wisdom, directions, and instructions on how to lead and manage and operate the city in all of its departments. Lastly, I pray, oh Lord, for the chief of police, the mayor, her staff, the assistants, and the city council members, the city manager, and every person and department that is instrumental in leading our city. I pray that you would bring our city economic prosperity. May you draw and attract to our city industry, businesses, and corporations that will produce jobs and revenue and help us to grow and progress. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Let us say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I, of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag.
Pledge of Allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
Our first proclamation this morning is for the San Angelo Amateur Radio Club. So those of you who are here in the audience for that, please come forward. Welcome. You want to come back around me so everyone can see your faces? They don't need to see your back. They want to see your faces. The San Angelo Amateur Radio Club, which traces its origins to amateur radio pioneers in 1922, is proud to be one of the oldest in Texas and certainly is the oldest radio club in the Concho Valley. The original membership was largely formed by curious and enthusiastic people intrigued with the possibilities of these emerging technologies and their potential use worldwide. On Thanksgiving Day in 1923, members of the newly formed San Angelo Amateur Radio Club transmitted what is believed to be the first-ever high school football game broadcast on radio in Texas and quite possibly the first in the nation, a matchup between San Angelo High School and their opponent, Brownwood High School. The game's coverage included play-by-play updates to approximately 100 homes in San Angelo that had a radio-receiving set. A separate two-way amateur radio broadcast was made in Morse code to an operator in Brownwood sharing real-time updates in that city. Unfortunately, Brownwood won the game, seven to zero. Locally and statewide, the San Angelo Amateur Radio Club, call sign Whiskey Five Quebec X-Ray, continues to make an impact in the radio-television broadcast industries, radio-retail commerce, and public safety radio, and provides backup communication assistance during city and county emergencies. Since their founding and throughout the Great Depression and World War II, through present day, the club has provided local support, including disaster response, storm spotting, civic event support, civil defense, STEM education, and of course, promotion of the amateur radio hobby. San Angelo's amateur radio enthusiasts lock hundreds of hours each year in support of our community's citizens and their needs. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, mayor of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim October 2022 as the 100th anniversary of the San Angelo Amateur Radio Club and congratulate all its members for their contributions to our community.
My name is Bob Heiser, and I would just like to thank the mayor and the council for remembering us and honoring us. Thank you.
I know we have folks from the United Way here, so would you please come forward? At least we have eight, no, two persons. Two. Okay, good. Welcome. Good. That's all right. Small is good. Small is strong. Community, the mission of the United Way of the Concho Valley is to provide the means by which a cross-section of our community may join in a community-wide effort to provide and deliver health and human services programs which address current community needs in a collective and collaborative manner. In 2021, more than 65,000 local Concho Valley residents benefited from the United Way of the Concho Valley contributions through social service agencies that provide emergency food and shelter, day and after-school programs for children, mental health services, substance use treatment and prevention, services for victims of child abuse and domestic violence, and many other social services. The objective of the United Way of the Concho Valley is to assist in the expansion or the development of service programs, promote preventive activities, and foster cooperation among local, state, and national agencies serving the community. The United Way is ready to assist all individuals with whatever needs may arise in the city of San Angelo. The city of San Angelo supports the United Way of the Concho Valley, and we ask that you do the same. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, mayor of the city of San Angelo, on behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize and applaud United Way of the Concho Valley for its achievement and positive determination to make a difference in our community. Thank you so much for what you do. Would you like to speak? Yes. I'm going to sign this.
My name is Ashley Ammons, and I am the president and CEO of the United Way. And I just want to start by saying thank you. The city has been such an incredible supporter for the 97 years that United Way has been in existence, and it is absolutely impossible for us to do what we do, as well as our community partners do, without the support of the city and the residents. Not only do the city of San Angelo individuals who live here, even the folks who work here, support the United Way through volunteerism, they serve on our boards, they serve as land executives, they serve on our community impact panels, our committees, and their donors. And they put their hard-earned dollars back into this community to hopefully provide a hand up to those 65,000 people who needed hope last year. So we are super appreciative, we are grateful, we are thankful, and we are just so blessed to live in such a wonderful city. Thank you.
Our next proclamation is to honor Daniel Valenzuela's 10th anniversary. So Daniel, if you will come down. The good news is we got rain. The bad news, the allergies have really kicked in, and that means I've taken an allergy pill, so my tongue's kind of thick and heavy today. So apologies for not being able to be as clearly spoken as I sometimes are. October 10th, 2022 marks Daniel Valenzuela's 10th anniversary as our city manager. This is rare by today's standards and represents a significant accomplishment. More than anything, it shows his commitment to our community. In December 2019, Daniel surpassed Harold Dominguez as the longest-serving Hispanic city manager of San Angelo. In January 2022, Daniel surpassed Tom Adams as the third-longest-serving city manager in the history of San Angelo, just behind Stephen Brown, who served 13 years, and H.D. or Dick Howard, who served 23 years. With the average service length for a city manager in San Angelo around six years, Daniel is not far from becoming our second-longest-serving city manager. Since joining the city, he has been at the forefront of efforts to secure more water, improve streets, and other infrastructure, streamline development processes, make pay more competitive for city employees, and increase the number of first responders. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, mayor of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize the 10th anniversary of San Angelo city manager Daniel Valenzuela and thank him for his hard work and dedication to our community and organization for the past 10 years.
Mayor, thank you so much. I'm so humbled by this recognition. First and foremost, I'd like to thank God. I'd like to give him praise, honor, and glory for the opportunity he's given me, the blessing to serve this wonderful community. I also want to thank all the council members that I've had the honor of working with from the group that appointed me back in October 2012 to this fine group that we have right now that I've worked with that's been just an extreme honor. Also want to thank the incredible staff that I have here at the city of San Angelo, from the directors to the first-line workers. Everyone does such an incredible job. Everyone's so dedicated to the work that they do, and that to me is very, very special. I'd be remiss in not thanking my beautiful wife, Susanna, who's up front. She has an interview here at nine o'clock on the radio, and she's still here to support me. So sweetheart, thank you for your support as well. When I first arrived in San Angelo, I had been city manager in this very small community for four years. Then I moved up to a bigger community, and I was there for four years. So when I arrived here, people were asking me, "Daniel, is this your stepping stone? You're going to do another four years and move on to the next bigger community?" I'm here to tell you, once you live here in San Angelo, you love this community, San Angelo is no one's stepping stone. I love this place, and as the mayor said, hopefully I can move up to the number three spot, maybe the second spot, maybe the first spot. Who knows? It depends on how long the city council will have me. But again, thank you all. Much love and respect to this community. We love what we do. Thank you, and God bless.
We will now go into the public comment portion of our agenda. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz, begin by stating their name and address for single-member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Are there individuals in the audience who would like to come forward and offer a public comment? Please come forward.
Jane White, District Six. Mayor Gunner, you just ceremoniously recognized city manager Daniel Valenzuela on behalf of this city council, so it seems appropriate that I should also take this opportunity to publicly recognize Daniel Valenzuela on my own behalf. As you know, Mayor Gunner, the gigantic Hotel Cactus sign atop Lee Fluger's 14-story cactus hotel in downtown San Angelo has been a disgraceful embarrassment to our entire city since 2005, when over half of the letters were removed and not subsequently replaced. As you also know, since January of this year, I've aggressively attempted to initiate private and/or public renovation of that iconic rooftop sign. In recent months, I've forced several city officials to admit in writing that the rooftop sign has been in violation of city sign code ordinances for many years. Mayor Gunner, you and Lee Fluger are arguably the two most highly acclaimed advocates of historical preservation and renovation in San Angelo, yet for the last 17 years, neither of you have initiated effective action to restore the unsightly rooftop sign. As I stated in my last public comments here, for many months, city officials have exhibited a pattern of unethical and/or illegal activities in order to prevent legally mandated sign code enforcement against Lee Fluger. City officials have repeatedly informed me the code violation citations will not be issued to Lee Fluger. They'll also inform me that city officials have absolutely no obligation whatsoever to enforce city ordinances if they choose not to do so. When I publicly exposed this corrupt activity at a city council meeting two months ago, Daniel Valenzuela immediately felt the need to defiantly defend the actions of Planning and Development Services Director John James and his wife, city attorney Teresa James, regarding this matter. The corrupt activity now appears to have occurred at the specific direction of Daniel Valenzuela. In much the same way, a number of other unethical and/or illegal actions also reportedly directed by Daniel Valenzuela were publicly exposed in a very recent City of San Angelo Development Corporation meeting. That direction by Daniel Valenzuela, two months ago, Daniel Valenzuela unlawfully directed police officers to remove me from City Hall while I was peacefully attempting to file a formal written complaint against the city government related to sign code enforcement. That direction by Daniel Valenzuela immediately led to my unlawful arrest. Mayor Gunner, you and this city council are mandated to immediately initiate a comprehensive, credible investigation regarding my official corruption allegations against Daniel Valenzuela, Teresa James, and John James, and also regarding precisely why Daniel Valenzuela chose to use his governmental authority to illegally have me forcibly removed from City Hall by police on August 15, 2023.
Thank you, Zane. I think your three minutes is up.
Three minutes are up.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Further public comment?
Brian Groves, District Six, communications manager for the city. Just wanted to remind everyone that we have a charter review committee town hall meeting tonight at City Hall at 6:00 PM in the East Mezzanine, and just wanted to invite the public to attend.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Good morning. Spencer Matthews, SMD Five. I know the train has left the station already, but I'd like to add a viewpoint on the vote for life that's coming up. Before doing so, let me state that I'm neither a Republican or Democrat. I call myself a naturalist. Don't worry, I'm not going to go streaking through the halls or anything like that. I'm just, I'm personally convicted to align with God, creation, and the natural process of birth and death. And so I am pro-life. I state my personal convictions to simply say that my following statement is not based on morals but on process. Our founding fathers gave us a constitution, a representative republic. The arguments at the time of our founding were largely between Federalists and Anti-Federalists, or rather, who should have the power, the states or the federal government? The conclusion was the federal government was essential in protecting our natural, God-given rights, and that the states would get all the rest. And that is why the Supreme Court overthrew Roe versus Wade, the correct constitutional decision. Before this decision, this chamber heard many arguments to go against what was considered federal law of the land to make San Angelo unique in morals, not in conviction of the pulpit, but by mob decision. My concern is in the process, less so now because the states have the power and Texas will be pro-life, so we'll probably align. However, this is more of a statement of conviction that the Fed passes powers to the states, just like the states passes powers down to the local levels. My concern is that ignoring this process for emotion and for it, we're making ourselves very exposed to expensive lawsuits that our city simply cannot afford. We also do not want to set precedent for other cities to do the same with their own agendas like transhumanism, which is knocking on our door and will be the agenda for the next several decades. So as this vote approaches, I know even though I stand for life, I oppose the process and will vote no, and I hope that others will do the same. Thanks.
Further public comment? Seeing none, we will move into our consent agenda. I will start with Larry. Do you have an item from this consent agenda that you would like to pull?
There's a couple of us who would like to have G pulled.
G, you got it. Karen? Lucy? Harry? Tom?
Nothing to pull.
Tommy?
No, ma'am.
Okay. May I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
For everything except item G, please.
That motion is made by Tommy. May I have a second? A second by Karen. Any public comment concerning any of the agenda items with the exception of item G? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye. With none opposed, the consent agenda is passed with the exception of item G. Did I get that right?
You got that one, Mayor.
With the exception of item G. Item G is consider ratifying COSA DC Board approval of a resolution authorizing a project under chapters 501 and 505 of the Texas Local Government Code to utilize sales and use tax funds in an amount not to exceed $75,000 to Rosenberger Site Solutions LLC for a project related to business enterprises that create or retain primary jobs, subject to city council approval, and authorizing the board president to negotiate and execute all necessary documents. Michael Dane, you're on.
Thank you. Good morning, mayor and council. Michael Dane, acting economic development director. Special thanks to the chamber folks who put this deal together for us. I'm going to introduce Michael and let him give you an overview of the project. I will give a little bit of a spoiler and point out that our incentive is dramatically below their cost to relocate to San Angelo. And with that, Michael, would you go over the project for us?
I'd be glad to. Michael Looney, VP of Economic Development, San Angelo Chamber of Commerce. Thanks for giving me a few minutes to present these slides on Rosenberger. Rosenberger is a Germany-based company that develops and sells and distributes electronics gear, electronics equipment, mostly for the telecommunications and automotive, aircraft, and defense industries. They have a multitude of different divisions. Rosenberger Gehm Beha in Friedolfen, Germany, is the headquarters. They have a U.S. division that was formed in 1996. That is Rosenberger North America. Rosenberger Site Solutions is a division of Rosenberger North America, but they're all contained under the Rosenberger Group.
I want you to pronounce.
I do, too.
Okay. When it says "division of Rosenberger," pronounce the next name, please. Approval will be based upon your ability to pronounce this.
And we have a second, third, and fourth and fifth on that.
Rosenberger Hochfrequency Technik. I've been talking to them a lot, so... They're an advanced manufacturer. They design, sell, distribute globally. Their products are used in just about every kind of telecommunications vertical in the world. We were very enthusiastic to have been introduced to them. We were in competition with another city, a fairly close-by city, and we stuck with them. We worked on this project for about six months, and they are very enthusiastic about their arrival in San Angelo. They employ 6,200 employees globally. They have a $1 billion in revenue cash flow stream. They will employ 25 to 30 people in San Angelo. They're going to start with 20, move into 25, and then into 30, everything from accounting, logistics, and technicians. We project that they will have about a $1 million, $39,000 a year salary for all their employees once they're settled in San Angelo, economic input of 7.5 million annually. And we have already begun discussions with them about prospective expansion within San Angelo. They wanted to get the first division set up first, and then we'll move on from there. This is a slide screen from their website. This is a slide screen for their telecommunications related to defense. This is some of the image of some of the product that they will be producing here in San Angelo. And this is what the inside of one of their fabrication facilities in Hungary looks like, but they've told us that this is what the San Angelo site will look like. They have done a long-term lease on a building on Tractor Trail, and so the inside of the Tractor Trail building looks very similar to this image that you see on the screen. This is an image of the verticals that they make the equipment for, and they don't build the exact tower, but they build all the gear that goes on the tower. There is a video for about two minutes that shows a little bit about the company and how their applications are done. If you wanted to see that, we could play it. If not...
Let's see if there's some questions first.
All right.
All right. The screen says there's about a million-dollar annual salary impact.
Yes. That's a combination of the salaries for the 25 people.
So you said that it goes from 20 to 25 to 30. So when you're looking at the $1 million, $39,585, is that for 20 employees?
It's for 20, yes.
For 20 employees?
Yeah, we programmed it for the 20. Yep.
And what's the timeframe for growth to the 25 to the 30?
Within a year.
So that would be pretty rapid.
It is. And they will only be bringing in one person from out of state, and that is, he's actually from Germany, and he is their director of engineering, but everyone else will be local hires. So when we started the process, we knew we were in pretty fierce competition. So what we did was, we got very close to Dr. Bill Kitch at Angelo State University and Howard College because of their really relatively newly-formed electrical technician program. And we started to push those resources to Rosenberger to let them know that we've got the feedstock for all the different employee types that they would need, and that made a really big impression. In fact, it probably ended up turning their minds to San Angelo because we proved that we've got that capability to give them the employees that they need. That conversation then began to evolve into a slightly higher number than the 20 based on their market share. So this is actually a relocation from Akron, Pennsylvania... So this is actually a relocation from Akron, Pennsylvania to San Angelo, so.
What was their connection to find San Angelo?
We still don't really know. We've become, I would say, close to their comptroller and to their Vice President of Operations in the United States. We know that they wanted to be somewhere near Austin, but they found that that marketplace was very compressed from a workforce standpoint and from an available facility standpoint, because it's only about a 20,000-square-foot facility. It's not a huge mega-facility. And so they just started working further and further out, and, and that's how, that's how they, they came into the Concho Valley, big country area, and so, yeah.
Well, I know at one point, you thought this deal was dead, and it came back alive again. I know that you were concerned that we had lost them at one point in time, so I appreciate your continuing to stick with and stay in contact and bring the actual project to a vote.
Well, I appreciate that, and I also appreciate you helping us in the summer when we were looking for a facility, and we found one that was in Tommy's district, but the zoning would have needed to be changed, and that was going to be very, very difficult to do. So Tommy and I had several conversations about whether that could be done. And fortunately for us, for San Angelo, and for our economy, they became, they got re-interested in a building that they'd looked at initially. And so, so here we are. We're going to be making a more formal announcement this afternoon. Hey, Brian?
Ryan Groves, are you in the house?
Oh, here we go. They sent us an animation of what the applications will be used for. one of the reasons why we've created that link between Angelo State Engineering and this company. Are there any other questions about Rosenberg? Hochfrequency Technik.
Just have one question. Lucy?
Hey, Michael, did you tell us how long this company had been around?
They're a pretty young company. They've been around since 1958. How did I do?
Did great.
Thank you. 1958 is when they were formed.
If there's no further questions, Larry, you have a question?
It's not so much a question as a clarification. I think the public is interested to understand how this quid pro quo works. There's $75,000 over three years. A lot of folks think it's, hey, if the company decides to pull out, we're left holding the bag on it.
Oh, it's performance-based. It's as they go.
So in other words, we don't hand them a $75,000 check the day they employ their first person?
Yeah, that's a, that's a really great question, Councilman, because there's a, kind of a myth that, that when we recruit a technical company or an energy company, manufacturer, we, we write them a check. That's not the case. It is all totally performance-based. So they have to hire a certain number of jobs, in this case, 20, create full-time equivalent jobs at a certain salary for a certain period of time, minimum three years. Once they've achieved those milestones, they submit proof of that to COSA DC. COSA DC examines it, researches it for veracity, and then will, will make that contribution to the company. The same thing with their, with their moving costs, too. A lot of the bulk of the 75 is, is to relocate extremely delicate equipment halfway across the country. And so, that was something that was pretty dear to them, pretty important to them, and it, it's something that they'll be reimbursed for.
So the reimbursement for moving the equipment is part of the $75,000?
Yes, yes, ma'am. It surely is. Donker. Mine here.
With that, further questions? If not, may I have a motion for approval? Lucy moves to approve. Who was seconded?
Harry.
Harry is seconded by Harry. Any public comment?
Anna Bartosz, Singleton, District 1. Just, I don't know if anybody does any research on, I assume this is 5G and beyond, and has anybody done research on the health effects of the 5G and beyond? I know it affects the animals. We are an animal. It certainly does affect us in some ways, so I don't know if there's any of you have done research on, on that, and what effects might be experienced as a result of all this 5G. Thank you.
Specifically this, go ahead, Tom.
I'm assuming these are just the fittings. They have nothing to do with the cellular coverage.
Can you repeat that, sir?
These are just the fittings and the connections and the production of those. Has nothing to do with the type of the coverage that would be out there.
That's correct. Yeah, it's just, it's just the gear and the equipment.
It's manufacturing, it's production.
It's a manufacturing operation.
They're not installing 5G.
Electronics manufacturing. No.
They're just providing equipment for multiple levels of communication, including cable.
I, I could have presented for an hour on the depth of the markets that they penetrate globally. It's, it's, it's everything. Use your imaginations on the Austin connection. Automotive, aircraft, and research is all part of their package, so.
I wonder what they do would have even gone back to the early days of cable.
Very much so. Very much so, yeah. So, okay, that's all I have.
All right, so you want us to leave? You want us to stand there until we vote? Or would you like to sit down while we vote?
I'll stand right here.
With that, there's a motion to second. We've had public comment. All those in favor of approving this opportunity, please say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes 7-0.
Okay, we'll go get another one.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good job.
That completes our consent agenda. We will now move into the regular agenda. The regular agenda is comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above, and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Today, we'll start with a presentation and possible action regarding San Angelo accessibility issues. And we have Kim Henry and Andrea Soufley, Soufle, here to present today.
Good morning, my name is Kim Henry, and I'm with District 3, and she's passing out a couple of forms that I wanted to provide you before I get started. All right. Again, I'm Kim Henry, and I want to first thank you for your time and attention when it comes to talking about accessibility in San Angelo. I previously conducted a public comment and was, I'm very grateful to be able to put on the agenda. But something that I want to kind of start with is, one, who we are, a little bit about ourselves, a little more. So myself, I'm a licensed social worker, and I focus on accessibility and really inclusion for everybody.
I live in District 1, and I'm an advocate for mobility.
So why are we here? We're here because our goal is really to ensure that every citizen, visitor, and newcomer has the access and motivation to participate in every program, service, and opportunity that San Angelo has to offer. However, people do not participate in things downtown, in the community of San Angelo anywhere. They don't shop, they don't eat, they don't go out because of accessibility issues. We're here to demonstrate today that these concerns are important, but also provide you an action plan, not just a problem, but a solution. So some things I would like for you to keep in mind today is that for someone who's legally blind, it could take up to three or four people just for them to be able to go eat at a restaurant downtown, or anywhere, again, in San Angelo. One person has to get the person who's legally blind out of the car, and the other one would have to go find a parking spot somewhere. It took, this weekend, when I was at the River Stage, I watched five people help an elderly gentleman down the steps at the River Stage to get to his seat. Families here have actually also saved a lot of money for accessible vehicles to allow wheelchair access, and they're not even able to use it because there's either not enough accessible parking spots, or the law enforcement is not held accountable. So if someone even were elected right now, or if one of you were to become limited mobility, you would actually have a difficult time getting to your seat today because of the way that the city council, this room is set up. So our mobility is temporary, and I really just want to, want you to keep that in mind. But what I do know is that we can do better. San Angelo has the capacity not to just to set the standard and meet, meet it, but actually be Texas' most accessible city. We could build a ramp all the way up to the cactus if we wanted to, but would it be accessible? Would it really be usable, and would it be something that everyone would want to use? We have to stop sending our own people to the basement to use the restroom, or to the back door just so they can come into a building. We cannot, I mean, I want you to consider how you would feel if you were told to use the back door, which is probably locked anyways. So going to the next slide, this is what we've done so far. It's very brief, but essentially, we've talked to a lot of people throughout the city, advocates, people, city employees, so forth and so on, but I wanted to provide a timeline for you. And before we specifically talk a little bit more about San Angelo, I want to provide the definition of the ADA, the American with Disabilities Act of 1990. It prohibits, prohibits the discrimination and guarantees that people with disabilities have the same opportunities as everybody else. And that includes employment, the ability to purchase goods and services, and of course, participate in our state and local government programs and services. I provided a definition here of what the ADA defines disability as for your review, if you would like. This slide are commonly referenced ADA standards and regulations. Specifically, we're focused on Title II, because that's what the city is responsible for, is falling within Title II. And it mandates that the designation of an ADA coordinator for cities with over 50 employees, which we have, as well as public notices and an establishment of grievance procedure, which I'll cover. If you look at your packet, you see that this slide is actually broken up a little bit more, but what are your requirements as a city? First is to designate an actual employee, also known as the ADA coordinator, not someone who might handle the ADA, but someone who's focused and dedicated to helping the public identify somebody to answer questions to, to make sure that we're in compliance, to protect the city, and to investigate any complaints. The city is also required to make a public notice, and not just something on the city website page, but something that's accessible to everyone, so we know who to interact when we have accessibility concerns, and that should be continuously updated. The grievance procedures, which is the third thing listed here, also should be a formal outline process. We don't really have one. If there's a concern, who do I call? Calling one person, he may coordinate some things, but there's, again, nobody designated to handle any grievance or concerns. The last two, self-evaluation and transition plan, so these are broken out because it does take a lot. The self-evaluation, I don't think San Angelo's ever done one. I found, did not find one on record, and it was supposed to be completed by 1992, which goes into the transition plan, which I brought up last time, is that the transition plan hasn't been updated since 1993, which is when the law was passed saying we need a transition plan. So a self-evaluation is an evaluation of the city and where we're at with accessibility, and the transition plan identifies any barriers that we have and how we're going to address those barriers. I wanted to provide you, I know the city council and every, a lot of people are concerned about the economy when, when it comes to San Angelo and money. People with disabilities have a huge impact on the economy. Specifically, I provided some stats down here about Tom Green County. I know we're just the city of San Angelo, but how many people within the county use our services or are employed in the city of San Angelo? And I want you to keep in mind that of all employees, people with a disability actually report a higher work quality and have a higher rate of retention. Studies even show that people with disabilities take fewer absence days, and they're more likely to stay on the job longer than non-disabled workers. So they contribute to our society. So where are we at when it comes to accessibility in the city? I created this to kind of give a snapshots of where we are in comparative to other cities. We have the populations, of course, and the ADA coordinator. If you look at your chart, we actually have an update. Abilene does now have an acting ADA coordinator and a citizens advisory committee. Right now, we have, again, an acting coordinator, so no one officially designated to take care of ADA compliance, which puts the city at a lot of risk, and of course, makes accessibility very difficult within the city of San Angelo. We could take time to review this, but I want to keep within time limits. But what, a big takeaway from this is that we're not necessarily behind everybody else, but we're not alone, I would say, but we are definitely behind.
And we can definitely set a standard for other cities our size.
You'll need to speak into the microphone if you could, if you're going to make comments, please.
It shows that we can set a standard for cities our size, which is an exciting option.
And we know since downtown is a priority, we wanted to share this specifically. This chart here is a chart, you see the black squares are parking lots, and the blue squares are accessible parking spots, some of them not in the best area, or not actually really accessible because there's no ramp nearby, or the, the street is not well-kept. So I'm going to turn it over to Andrea, and she's going to point out some things.
We went through downtown, I went through downtown and took some photos. This first one is of the Social Security admin building, which is new to downtown. However, the ramps that are available are on the very corner. There are not any accessible parking spots in front of the building. The closest.
They're parking spots in the parking garage.
But they're not accessible. They're not accessible. The, the parking garage has a, a sign up on it that says not to enter. So the closest.
I think it's for Social Security personnel only, it's not for the public to use. I think that's what the sign is indicating. It's for Social Security employees, which would, you would hope would also be for people coming in to that building to use, so not just employees, but people needing those services.
Because people apply for disability.
Yeah.
In the SSI building, yeah.
Yes.
The closest parking spots are about half a block away behind the library. There's only four spots right there, and those are usually utilized for the library. This one's in front of Eggmire's, which is a largely tourist attraction, but a lot of local people shop at Eggmire's. I know I do. But this is the condition of the sidewalk facing, okay, and then this is right in front of their sidewalk. I have actually tripped on these pavements, on these pavers before. And then this is what I found when I was there the other day taking photos, which had not been cleaned up, which is definitely a trip hazard for anyone. Across the street at Confetti, Concho Confetti, there's an accessible parking space, which is great. However, the sidewalk ramp is to the right, and you'll have to travel behind your car into oncoming traffic. There are not any accessible parking spots in front of the building. The closest-
There are parking spots in the parking garage.
They're not accessible. The parking garage has a sign up on it that says not to enter. So the closest-
Well, I think it's for Social Security personnel only, it's not for the public to use. I think that's what the sign is indicating, it's for Social Security employees, which you would hope would also be for people coming in to that building to use. So not just employees, but people needing those services.
Because people apply for disability in the SSI building, yeah. The closest parking spots are about half a block away behind the library. There's only four spots right there. And those are usually utilized for the library. This one's in front of Eggmire's, which is a largely tourist attraction, but a lot of local people shop at Eggmire's. I know I do. But this is the condition of the sidewalk facing, okay, and then this is right in front of their sidewalk. I have actually tripped on these pavements, on these pavers before. And then this is what I found when I was there the other day taking photos, which had not been cleaned up, which is definitely a trip hazard for anyone. Across the street at Confetti, Concho Confetti, there's an accessible parking space, which is great. However, the sidewalk ramp is to the right and you'll have to travel behind your car into oncoming traffic in order to get to the sidewalk ramp. Now, this is fun. I've never been to City Hall or the Murphy Performance Center because I'm not able to walk up the steps. So when I really tried to see how I would get into, or anybody with mobile difficulty would be able to get into City Hall or the Murphy Performance Center, I was met by very constricting and confusing signage. So the first sign that I encountered was actually in between City Hall and the old library, which the planning department is in right now. There are two handicap spots or accessible spots right there. There's also a sign there that says accessibility to the left of the building, okay? So then I encountered this picture that's on the far right and it says, accessible entrance-
Around the building.
Around the building. So then you go to the west side of the building. So on the west side of the building, there are two accessible spots, but then that sign says accessible entrance to the right, which means you have to go back to the front of the building. So then I'm like, I don't know which, I don't know which door to enter. We've also had comments from other people in our advocacy group saying that they've had to enter through a back door and it was locked. So if you're into independent living, such as I am, I'm not necessarily with other people, I would not be able to walk around the front of the building to get the door unlocked. However, there were two people, so one person had to stay there in their chair and they, which makes them very vulnerable to any kind of attack or robbery or, I'm not saying it'll happen, but it makes them really vulnerable. So then they had to wait till their person got inside, got somebody to unlock the door, went downstairs, and then they kind of had to enter like a second-class citizen through the back door, through the basement, and then go up an elevator. It's just very involved. Now, this is the area that's behind the Fellowship Church by the new ramp that was built, and this is on the river level. And so I found one accessible spot there. However, there was this, in the middle picture, there was this orange metal thing, so hopefully it can fit whatever device you're walking with or rolling with through there. The pavers are very messed up, so that creates a trip hazard. Then the incline or decline of the ramp is quite steep, as you can see there and there. And then there are two tracks of what I'm guessing is an old train of some sort, like for kids, a kiddie train. But these are, if you have a cane or if you have sight issues or you're in a walker or anything on wheels, this is a major trip hazard right there. This is the map of downtown. The black areas are parking lots, which are wonderful, but none of them, except the one right here and the one along Mrs. Hattie's parking lot, have accessible parking. The temporary spots that the church has put out are very helpful. They usually do that on Sunday mornings. Actually, the Catholic Church there has, has them in pots, with flower pots, has about four of them there. So they're quite aware that they are in need of more spots for their congregants. And it's wonderful that they provide that, but it just shows the lack of accessibility downtown. And then this was great. I found this, it's right across the street from here. There's an accessible, this is setting the example, this is what we should be doing along all of our parks, is there's an accessible space with a ramp and the picnic bench, the picnic table is on a concrete slab, but the thing is, the concrete slab extends out to the sidewalk, which along our Rio Concho, the river, those picnic benches and the benches on their own and even the swing, they're on concrete slabs, but there's no, there's grass in between the concrete slab and the sidewalk. So that creates accessibility issues. But this one also has space right here for a wheelchair to wheel right up to the table. So it's a great spot.
So we're not just here, of course, to talk about either parking spots or, you know, the events or the programs or services that the government provides that everyone should be able to participate in, but we're here, again, to provide an action plan. And these are our main goals, because what do we need to do? We have a strategic list of goals essentially to get San Angelo moving in the right direction. We understand this is going to be a long process. I do not expect to see a lot of change immediately, but this is the steps that we recommend taking. First, establishing and endorsing a mayor's committee on people living with disabilities. If you look in your packet, I provided an example of the Fort Worth meeting agenda for their committee and they support compliance efforts, they are disability advocates, people living with disabilities, and of course, key city personnel. And we would also like to request that we create this committee and allow for quarterly updates on the city council agenda. We feel it's very important that this committee be involved in the hiring process of an ADA coordinator and also participate or have representation at certain commissions like the Planning Commission. But you see here, they talk about things like accessibility, the community education, they provide reports. It's extremely important. Number two here is that we would like to request that city council and key city personnel receive a free 90-minute accessibility simulation at the next training day that you may have, presented by our team, to show essentially what it's like to live with accessibility concerns or disabilities in San Angelo. The next goal here is, or step would be to hire a certified ADA coordinator. I've attended the ADA coordinator certification training for the first half and there is a certification training program. We don't just want someone hired in the position that we would like, that's, you know, a person in the community. We want someone, yes, local, but someone that has completed this training and again, our committee takes part in the hiring process. I provided some more information on your packet of what specifically the ADA coordinator is responsible for, but primarily, they need to be hired to also participate in the development and implementation of the self-evaluation and transition plan. Number four is to publish an RFQ. We were told that Kim Lee Horn may just be the person doing our transition plan and we would like to request that there actually be a published RFQ so people can make bids and we can find someone who is very knowledgeable and has expertise specifically on ADA transition plans and self-evaluations. Number five is to implement an accessibility and facilities request form. I hope later today you do review this packet and when you go back and look at how we compare to other cities, we do not have anything that someone can go into and say, hey, this is, you know, I noticed this is a problem. Not necessarily a complaint every time, but hey, there, I need an ASL interpreter for here. I don't know if we've even had one ever at a city council meeting. ASL stands for Adult Sign Language. And so this is an example from Wichita Falls where they have this form online and, you know, it wouldn't just come straight to the city council, that's something that our committee could review before it goes to the ADA coordinator. And college stations will. Number six, this is an agenda that you have in your packet from when I attended the ADA certification, coordinator certification training. And I highly recommend and we would like key city personnel to attend the next ADA symposium, which it's three days and it's in Kansas City, so it's live, so you can be there in focus. But it is the first step in really becoming an ADA coordinator and not necessarily meaning all of us here need to be certified, but to, I mean, it's going to give you what you need to know to understand and address accessibility effectively. The last two, number seven and eight, on your packet, it's very small. It looks like it's not a lot of content, but these are two huge recommendations and they're going to be the biggest project to tackle. Essentially, you know, we've never, again, done a self-evaluation from what I can find and we're starting from scratch. So we're expecting anywhere from six to 24 months just to be able to process this. But keep in mind that the ADA, whatever your motivations are, if you're motivated just because you care about people, if you're motivated by money, if you're motivated by following the law, whatever the case may be, maybe someone in your family is living with a disability. The ADA, it's to protect everybody and it's so we can all enjoy what San Angelo has to offer. You know, what we're really asking for today is for city council to allot time on the executive agenda for us to explore and discuss these things further and talk about the action plan, because I believe within the next 30 days, we can definitely have an official committee that's ready to walk or roll with this through the journey with the city. And so we are asking essentially to get a vote, again, to be on the executive agenda and to endorse a committee to drive this forward. Last slide, these are some resources that I highly recommend you're reviewing as well. I feel like it's your duties and responsibilities leading the city. You'll have the link sent to you later today. And that's all I have. Pending further questions. Thank you.
Are there questions from city council members? Okay.
Looks like we've got a lot of work to do.
Yes, we do have a lot of work to do. It's, I've heard the word embarrassing used a few times about things in the city of San Angelo, whether it's a certain population or a program or a sign, regardless, it's embarrassing that I have to have a meeting at my office, which is actually at the Economic Development Center downtown, the Business Factory, and someone attended who was using a wheelchair and they had challenges getting in that building. So that's heartbreaking that I'm finding somewhere else to have a meeting to try to support people with disabilities.
Is there not a ramp into the building?
There's a ramp, but the ramp at the corner was flooded because of the city street and the other ramp, which is by the back door, which you have to have a key to even access, is, has a huge lip that you would, I mean, it was difficult for her to get over the ramp and her mother had to help her. And so, and not only that, the sidewalk's tiny, so you have to literally do like a huge, I mean, no, it was a struggle.
It's very short and narrow and you can't make that turn into, it's difficult to make that turn in a wheelchair. Also, the other thing I wanted to add was, we have ADA compliance, right, in things that we build, right? But that doesn't necessarily mean that it's ADA accessible. So please keep that in mind. It's just the least amount of effort that needs to be done where you don't have to get fined or called up by the DOJ, but it doesn't mean that it's really accessible. And I think that that's something that a lot of us don't realize, okay?
Tom?
Just some quick, and just, number one, we are ADA accessible, you can come in the back and roll up and come around, so that comment, I just want everybody to know that we are actually compliant here. Okay, number two, are you taking this to county people and federal and private individuals? I looked at a lot of the properties down here that you have listed, they're private property, all right? I looked at some stuff here, it's federal and it's not city, and then some of those buildings are county buildings. So are you taking this same platform and presentation to those people too? I can see us dealing with the city part, but I don't want us being held accountable and saying, well, this is, well, that's private property. I know there are buildings and, and so I just want you, I have a 90-year-old mother and if I haul her, it's in a stroller and a wheelchair. So I get it, I see those things, but I understand those things come in time but not their entire life. But I want to make sure you get the best coverage for what you're doing here. Is that, are you also taking this to the county or are you also taking it to some of the federal buildings around here?
Yes, so that's a great question. So we, I have started working on other avenues like the county through federal. I even write federal grants, so I understand what some of our funding goes to and what the requirements are for that. A key point of that is, again, we don't have an ADA coordinator, so when I go to ask some of these buildings who is responsible for this, I've had debate on who's responsible for this piece of parking or this parking lot or this building. People don't even know the answer to that. And so I would love for the entire world to hear what we're trying to say and they're going to eventually, but if they don't even know what building they're responsible for or they don't know what their services they're responsible for or programs, you could have a private building, but if there is a city function that's in that building, the city is still responsible. And so they need to have a role in that. But again, not having someone designated and focused on ADA compliance, it's kind of just up in the air. So we can't even direct people to take action right now. That's a good question, thank you.
I just wanted to make sure we were fair on the coverage.
Oh, yes, I agree. This isn't just something that the city, this is not an attack on the city, this is not a way to say the city's wrong. There are a lot of things that are wrong, right? And we can wait until somebody else does something, but usually people that wait till someone else does something, that's when the Department of Justice decides to come down and do it for them. And I definitely don't want that to happen here in the city of San Angelo. We have a lot of resources here, we have a lot of people, of course, but yes, I'm definitely taking other routes to make sure that the coverage is fully there. Because it's everyone's responsibility, yes, sir.
Other questions? Larry?
I need to point out that this isn't by design that people don't correct the situations. What it is, is we don't think about it, because unless it's our problem, it's not a problem. Having been a caregiver for many years, I've experienced the tiny bathrooms and the places you can't get up except to go out in the street and drive them around, or the blockage of a lift. This morning I came in and I saw a parking space that was designated for handicap. It also had a curbside pickup sign there.
Yes, so that goes, and that goes to speak to our priorities. Why do we have more city council parking spots than we do accessible parking spots in this parking lot when there's so many events that happen here? How many people living with disabilities even come to the Chamber Luncheon like today, right, which talks about the city? And so we're trying to make it more accessible and more comfortable as well as motivating for people to participate, because you're right, it's, you do see a lot of things that happen and it is essentially a lack of action taken on individuals' part. So, yes, thank you.
It's also an economic issue too. And we talk heads and beds. And those heads and beds of people with disabilities are important to our economic interests. And as we've noticed, this is a major medical center here. People come from counties around to come in and they need to have services that are proper for them and accessible to different functions, whether it's restaurants, whether it's a sporting event, whatever. We need to do everything we can because it's dollars in our pocket.
Right. And that's a good point. Twenty or 18% of the tourism revenue that San Angelo generates, 18%, almost 20, almost a fifth, comes from medical tourism, which is people coming outside of the city of San Angelo, coming to San Angelo to get medical care, which ironically, may be people living with a disability as well or have limited mobility, right? And so, again, that's a very good point. Thank you.
Any further questions? All right. At this point, I want to thank you for your presentation. You did a lot of work, a lot of effort, and put a lot into this and I think most of us have gained some information from this. I'm not sure we're ready to take any possible action, but we will put together a game plan and I'm not sure what the timeframe will be, but we understand it's important. We understand the impact on the community and people with disabilities, so we will develop a strategy and a plan.
Who do I talk to to check in on that?
You would check with Daniel Valenzuela.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, I definitely do recommend that we sit down, work together, develop a plan, something that we can bring back to city council with the recommendation. And I think that's the starting point and that we can get the ball rolling to make sure that we're definitely complying and doing what we should be doing. So let's work together. Let's get together and I'll get my essential staff as well and we'll come back with that recommendation.
Thank you. We greatly appreciate that. Thank you and again, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Item B is the first reading and public hearing of an ordinance for Z22-19, a request to rezone property from the single-family residential zoning district to the neighborhood commercial zoning district being .435 acres located at 1901 Junus Street.
Mayor. Mayor, I hate to interrupt, but I think we have some individuals who would like to make public comment on the last item.
John, if you'll take your seat. Are there individuals who would like to come forward? We didn't ask for public comment because we didn't have a motion on the floor, but if you have, like to offer some public comment, we'd love to hear it.
Thank you. My name is Neldon Allen and I live in Tommy Hebert's district. I have a daughter that was in a horrific car wreck and most of you all know her and she is in a wheelchair. I want to tell you that we have encountered many problems over the years here in San Angelo. Murphy Performance Hall, I love to go to things and take her, but there's lots of things. I make a point of going to the box office on the day of the event and saying, remember we're coming, I have tickets, be sure the door's open. They've never had it open one time, not once. I've always had to go upstairs, leave her downstairs. I've had trouble with parking. I paid, if you can imagine this, it was $38,000 for the van and $37,000 to have it converted. I had a really nice car for that. And then she can't drive it. Why? Because people park over the line. Because people park over the lines. I have met with two police chiefs, two, and they give me a card of somebody to call because when we call the police and they come out, they will not tow that car. And it's been some problems. So I commend you today for saying, we're going to look at it. I really appreciate what you said. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Further public comment?
There are Kirkpatrick. I'm in Larry's district. And I have a suggestion. If you think about hiring someone for this position that the lady talked about, hire a handicapped person so that they can better look at things. Because when we traveled all the time, when my husband was living, he was handicapped. And many of the hotels and the places that you wanted to go, they had handicapped areas, but you couldn't use them. And when you checked with the Best Western or something, they would say, oh, no, we designed that. Well, if you're not handicapped, you have no idea what you're going through. So my suggestion is, please hire, if you're going to hire someone, please hire a handicapped person.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, John James, you can come forward. First reading and public hearing of an ordinance. Did I read this already? I read it already?
Yes.
You're on then.
Thank you. This is a rezoning request for property. You can see three lots here from the Single Family Zoning District to the Neighborhood Commercial, just under a half an acre. You can see here that it is, the yellow is the neighborhood designation within our future long-range plan. However, the Neighborhood Commercial category is considered consistent with that neighborhood designation, so there's no need to change the plan. Although you can see it is near this Neighborhood Center designation, which is specifically designated for Neighborhood Commercial. The other thing I'll note, that most of that block frontage is already zoned commercial, mostly general, commercial, heavy commercial, but then a little bit of neighborhood commercial. This would just extend that to the end of the block. Although this is designated as neighborhood, you can see that that's the Little League ball fields. And so that's another reason we think the commercial designation would be appropriate there. We did send our notices to the surrounding property owners, did not receive any responses in support or in opposition. As I mentioned, this is consistent with our comprehensive plan. As staff had reviewed this, believe that this is an appropriate use at that location. Staff does recommend approval, as did the Planning Commission unanimously at their September meeting. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do I have questions or comments from city council members? Go ahead, Karen.
Is this being requested in anticipation of some already identified tenants or clients?
Not that I'm aware of, and again, with the zoning request, you're approving that zoning district, which would allow anything within that zoning district. So if there was somebody standing before you saying, this is what we want to do, I would often caution you, they can do that, but they can also do anything else that that zoning allows. So in this case, I'm not aware of a particular proposal.
Why would it come forward for consideration if no one's requesting it?
No, they are requesting it. We just don't necessarily know what they're proposing on the site.
They have to live within what that zoning requires.
That's correct.
Further comments or questions?
Move to approve as presented.
Thank you, Tom. Seconded by Harry. Public comment? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All in favor of approving item B of the regular agenda, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, that motion passes 7-0. Our closed session, the executive session, and the provision of Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to requirement that meetings be opened under the following sections, with Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney Regarding Cosa DC. We shall adjourn for the closed session. We'll be back following that session. Coming in this meeting will be called back to order. There's no announcements today concerning discussion and executive sessions, so we will move on to follow-up and administrative issues, meaning appointing various board nominations. And today, the tax increment reinvestment zone appointment of John Mark Hoag, SMD1, as chairman of the board for the remainder of the year, ending January 2023. May I have a motion for that? So moved by Tommy. Seconded by Tom. Any public comment? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Are there announcements of consideration for future agenda items?
Mayor, I would like to get an update on the animal shelter problem that we were having.
Okay. May I have a motion for adjournment?
May.
So moved by Tommy.
Second.
Seconded by Lucy. Any public comment? Did you like us to drag this out a little bit longer? None? Okay, then we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.